... member meeting order, let's look at the flag please. The legislation to supply the United States of America to be a part of the political system, what we need on your own, and the principle of liberty and justice.
All right, we'll wait for Mary to come back.
Sorry?
That's all right, we're just gonna approve your minutes anyway, so we're gonna approve the prior town board meeting minutes.
Aye.
Motion second, all favor, aye.
Aye.
Bob and Chris.
I said so moving, he said aye.
I was moving ahead.
All right, move on to the clerk report, please, Mary.
Town clerk's report for August 2019, zoning board special permit application $100, planning board site plan review application commercial $200, dog licenses $40, town clerk fees, de cows for hunting and fishing $11.36, vital statistics, marriage licenses $52.50, certified copies $10, interest $0.87, total check for the general fund $414.73, trust and agency escrow for the zoning board joyful acres brewery $250, total check for trust and agency $250, paid to New York State Department of adding markets for dog licenses $16, paid to New York State Department of Health $67.50, paid to New York State Department of Environmental Conservation $194.64, total for August 9/42/87.
So, clerk's report, thank you, Mary.
Okay.
Mail review.
All right, we have the keeping identities of senior safe program, and that will be running from September 9th to September 20th, when the town hall is open, the container will be here, you can just put your paperwork, whatever documents you have that you want to have shredded, and just put them right in, but when I am here, Thursday 6 to 8, Saturday 10 to noon, or other times when the building's open. A public hearing for the town of Livingston Planning Board will be held actually tomorrow night, September 4th at 7:00 PM, at the Livingston Planning Board meeting, they'll have a public hearing, and this will be on specialty use permit and site plan approval by Tarpin Towers. Let's see, this is on Vansky Road, and the applicant intends to use the property for a wireless telecommunications facility, and the information is available at the town hall for that, and that's tomorrow night. We have a letter from Germantown Central School District, from Superintendent of Schools Susan Brown, and the athletic director Christina Putney. Dear Claremont Town Board, the purpose of this letter is to request the use of the Claremont Soccer Field. The Germantown Central School District is planning to begin a capital project in September 2019. The project includes sports field work, which will make some of our fields unusable for two years. Although we will still have use of our one soccer field, we are looking for a second field to ensure that all four soccer teams can hold practices and hopefully have a few home games. Please respond with any soccer field availability, as well as any cost and/or requirements associated with our use. Even if the field may have limited availability, we would be very thankful to you for allowing our teams to use it. Thank you for your consideration. That's it.
That's it, all right, thank you, Mary. Just to comment on the letter from the Triptown School, I had conversations with the athletic director, she did advise me the situation, and since they've already basically started, I did actually tell them to go ahead, as long as they gave us the insurance to pay, which I have received from the school, I said they could go ahead and use it for practices. They have been practicing on it a few nights already, and they plan on using it for some of their practices, like I said, when they can't coordinate with their other field. I don't have an issue with that, as long as, like I said, they cover it with insurance, and they've actually come over and striped the field for us, so since they're using it, they're gonna stripe the field. So, you know, I was gonna talk about it a little more in budget time, and then, you know, when we have our budget meeting, but for now, I said go ahead and use it, so.
Do we have any other teams that are using it now, do we have any conflicts?
We don't, we have a travel team that doesn't really use it this time of year, that was used it through the spring, but, you know, a little bit here and there, but other than that, no, no scheduled events, so it shouldn't be an issue, so, just to let everybody know. But again, I'd like to talk about it a little more when we get the budget.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody have any correspondence for the web committee? I'll let you talk a little bit about that when your committee report. All right, committee reports, let's start with Bob.
Yeah, nothing much this time, the truck has been sold, I think Ray's got some more information on that, on their old business, so that's good.
Good. Good. Any more updates on that?
So, the web update has kind of been on hold for, I guess, since spring, really, and recently I got some time and started working on getting us ready to switch over to the new website. I sent out an email to the web committee and the board to look at the site, see if they have any issues that they would like changed before I start migrating with the remaining data, but I think we're kind of in the end stretch, and if the board is happy, then at some point we'll cut over.
I just had a couple of questions. One, was that on the page that says zoning and planning, there's nothing on there for the planning board, is that just?
It's probably an oversight.
Okay. And then, on the current website, it mentions the ethics committee and the board of assessment review, and those are not anywhere on the test website, was that, you know, purposeful or just an oversight?
I'll check with that as well. So that was the ethics and what?
Ethics and board of assessment review, those are the couple of things I noticed right away. I thought the minutes, I know you questioned about the minutes, and that's kind of the same way they are right now, it's just, it's more chronological than being segregated by the different boards, and I thought that was fine.
Yeah, I sent a comment back, I thought it looked great, I mean, I think it's much easier, I think should hopefully make it easier for everybody to use, so, excellent. Good.
I'll send you any feedback I have, either before end of week.
Okay, thank you.
I spend most of my time upgrading all of my operating systems, so that I could use different browsers to look at it, and I didn't actually get to the website, so.
All right, Chris, any?
No, I have nothing new.
All right, Dawn?
We received our $750 check from the Bank of Green County for the park entrance, so I can have Ray deposit that, and then we were also notified by the Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation that the grant that Mary and I worked on and submitted at the end of July did not meet the criteria for the grant, I'm not quite sure what that means, so I will call and find out what that means, but, you know, we did have, we do have a lot of work put together that we can now use that and go, and as kind of a basis, and update it as need be, and apply for other grants, so it was not a total waste of time at all, so I think that, I will call and see, you know, why we didn't meet this criteria, and if there are other grants out there that we are eligible for, for this work. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dawn, and thank you for the work on that, so, $750 is great, I mean, everything helps, so, thank you, Green County, again.
They've been good to us for a lot of years, yeah, when they opened a new branch up in Lash, I did meet the CEO there and thanked them, and they said that's something that they do.
Yeah, they've been very generous over the years, absolutely.
Something in the paper recently, and some significant grants that they've announced that they've done for our business.
Yeah. Okay, let's move on to old business, park signage, last month we discussed park signs, we were gonna go ahead and get some estimates on some signage, shortly after our meeting, I was contacted by the head, one of the park committee members, Amy, and she said she had some ideas about possibly centralized, something like a kiosk, to put information in, something that you could put, change information, instead of having to update signs constantly, sounded to me like something we should really look into, because it did, you know, catch my attention, it sounds like an interesting way to go about it, so I did, I did just ask Dawn before we got started this evening if she'd be willing to communicate back and forth with Amy and work on it with her to see if we can come up with some estimates on what it might cost and how we go about that, so Dawn was graciously enough to accept the task to work this out and come back with some information for us for next month, so we're gonna hold off on the signs for now, until we figure out if this is something we wanna look into and go forward with.
And you said you have a meeting on the 30th?
No, kiosk is an interesting idea at some point, maybe sooner rather than later, but I think we should still have a sign at the entrance, so that people coming in, they're not gonna stop and get out of their car and go look in a kiosk, we may have more information to put in there, but some of the things that are on the original sign that we want them to know coming in, I think we should still have that.
It might be an interesting thing to coordinate together, you know, that's something we might look at, so that's why, before we go ahead with it, let's try to take a look at the whole thing, and then we'll decide, you know, I think it'd be a good idea. Okay, just a couple updates, sales tax revenue, we just, back of our deposits, you'll see the sales tax, sales tax check came in this month, for the second quarter, it was $105,301.04, which is about $7,000 more than last year at this time, again, sales tax continues to hold strong throughout the county, spoke to the treasurer this past week at a meeting, and right up to date, we're still running about 5% above last year's numbers, which is great, you know, I think, you know, it certainly helps us, since we, you know, when we budget the sales tax, we usually are a little conservative, and it's coming in above and beyond what we budgeted, so this is working out well for us, I think we're on track, if next quarter comes in, you know, we're on track for probably $60,000, roughly, above budgeted sales tax revenue for the year, which is fantastic, you know, that'll go a long way in offsetting what we planned on taking out of fund balance to budget, you know, to balance the budget, so, again, I say it every quarter, please spend your money locally, it obviously helps, it helps the county, helps the town, helps everybody in the local businesses, so.
Is the county looking at any indications for the future with all the stores that are closing in Greenport?
No, not that I know of.
I think we might wanna continue to be conservative on that, because it may keep going up, and that's great, but there's a number of stores in the shopping district.
At some point, at some point, we're gonna level off or take a step back, so yes, we do have to continue to be conservative with our estimates, and we were plenty conservative with our number this year, next year, well, again, we talked about budgets, we'll have to keep that in mind, you know, we're not gonna raise our revenue prediction way up, I mean, we'll keep it conservative, but we'll maybe adjust it a little bit, but again, let's, you know, we'll keep an eye on that and hope forward. But anyway, it's doing great, and, you know, again, you know, continue, please spend your money locally, I can't say it enough. Truck sale, just to update everybody, we talked last month about, we had a dump truck that we put on Auctions International, we did not get a high enough bid that we were satisfied with, I think the highest bid was $8,500 or something like that, we were looking for a minimum of $10,000, so we rejected this lowest bid, or the highest bid of $8,500, the auction business called the highest bidder, says, listen, they have a minimum bid of $10,000, would you be interested for $10,000, and the highest bidder took it, so they accepted the buy for $10,000, so we got the minimum bid that we were looking for, so we should be receiving that check probably next month, it is sold, it is done. And that will go into the highway fund, obviously, is what we plan on putting back in the highway fund, yeah. All right, new business, budget workshop, just wanna set a date for our budget workshop, we have to start working on the numbers for next year, spoke to everybody a little bit ahead of time, looking at Tuesday, September 17th, at 6:30 PM, to hold our first budget meeting, and if necessary, we will have a second budget meeting on Monday, the 23rd of September, at 6:30.
What time did you say for the?
6:30.
For the 17th?
6:30, so Tuesday, the 17th, at 6:30, and then if necessary, Monday, the 23rd, at 6:30, and Mary's gonna advertise that as a budget workshop, and/or town business if necessary, I forget how you word that, you have that?
And any other business that comes before the board.
There you go, we're covered, just in case if something comes up we need to act on. Okay, just a brief discussion before the meeting starts tonight, we need to amend our Resolution 33 of 2019, our organizational meeting minutes, which is a salary pay scale for the 2019 budget, did not realize that we've still had $10 an hour as a minimum pay, for hourly pay for the secretary to the bar, and the assessment review board meeting, additional time for $10 an hour, so I'd like to make an amendment to that resolution to upgrade those that are $10 an hour to prevailing minimum wage, so we're covered, even when it changes again. So it's for the assessment review board meeting, additional time, and secretary for the bar, and as one of them, trial juror.
What's the minimum wage then?
$11.10.
Goes to $11.70 at the end.
And it goes up again at the end of the year, so if we just put prevailing minimum wage recovered, these words, going forward. Second on that, motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? So, I'm in compliance, at least. Okay, I don't really have a whole lot more, just to discuss, business-wise supervisor report, things with the bridge, just wanna mention, I think we mentioned last month that it is down, it's been picked up, cleaned up, I did go over there to take a look, and on our side, the Claremont side, they still have not put up the guardrails to block it off, they have a barricade up, obviously, concrete barricade, but there's missing guardrails on the sides that would protect anybody from going off the edges. I brought this up to meeting last week in the county, and they said that they know, they're working on it, they're coming down to do it, it's in the works, so, I told them sooner rather than later before something happens, I'd like to see them up, but I haven't checked this past week, I don't know if they've been down, but obviously yesterday was a holiday, so I kinda doubt, maybe this week it'll be down, but it is down, it's removed, it's been cleaned up, unfortunately.
Well, they put the new bridge in, they scheduled the guardrails to match that.
That would be a nice conversation, wouldn't it? County roads, this year, the state, every year the Columbia County contracts with the state to plow some of the state roads, Route 9, Route 9G, a lot of them throughout the county, we contract with the state, this year, the state has decided they wanna take some of these roads back, they are no longer gonna be paying the county to plow them, which is going to include Route 9 and Route 9G on the southern end of the county, a couple other ones going forward through Livingston, but their thought is that they're trying to get away from paying the county, I think we got $700,000 roughly a year to maintain the state roads throughout the county, so they're taking it back about half of them, and they're gonna put a couple more guys, a couple more trucks on the road, do it themselves, so they're cutting down on what they're reimbursing the county to do. This has been a long conversation through the Public Works Committee, I don't really think it's a great thing, as far as financially, I think the county will actually make out better, yeah, we used to get a reimbursement to do this, but we used to have to have extra trucks on the road, extra manpower, in the long run, I think we actually were losing a little bit of money on this deal, and the only benefit is I know the county will probably take better care of the roads than the state, so this year, I think you're gonna see a difference when you're trying on state roads, on how they're treated, how often they're plowed, and how much salt can be put down, something the county's gonna keep an eye on, if it's an issue, we'll obviously take it up with the state, but I just wanna let everybody know that there may be a little bit of difference on these state roads going forward, the county still is doing the northern part of the county, New Lebanon, you know, out in Canaan, a lot of those areas there, because the state wasn't very convenient for them to take those back, so we got stuck with what they didn't want, is what it come down to, I said give it all back to them, but the county didn't want to give up the revenue, to me, it was, it's actually a benefit to us to get rid of it, because, you know, we have five or six trucks dedicated for state roads, every one of those trucks are getting beat up, they're $250,000 apiece, you know, that cost comes out of the number we get reimbursed, and, you know, in the long run, we're actually really not making anything if not losing money, so, I think they may try to take back the rest of them in a couple of years, their idea was they were gonna take them all back, but they couldn't handle them all this year, so the county's stuck with what they didn't wanna take back to help them out, but I just wanna put it out there, please, you know, be careful this year when it comes to plowing, the snow and ice, it may be a little bit different than it has been in the past, and if it's an issue, you know, please let me know, complain to the county, the state, complain to the state, because they will be the ones maintaining it. Budget, working on the county budget, actually, the numbers actually were looking pretty good for quite a while when we were going through a lot of these meetings, until we got to the healthcare, you know, the controller told me this year, these years' numbers were looking pretty good, we would've been doing very well, excuse me, if we didn't have a huge overrun on the healthcare costs, $3.7 million over budget on healthcare for the county, that's a huge hit, and that's, that's the reason they're telling me the taxes are gonna get raised again this year. I haven't seen any final numbers, any predictions on what we're looking at, but they're saying they're gonna keep it under the cap, which, you know, is 2%, so minimum, or maximum would be 2%, but that's the excuse to use it for raising taxes again this year.
What's driving the numbers?
The county has a self-insurance health plan, it's actually saved us money over the years, but I guess there's a couple, two or three really, really bad, expensive cases that are really blowing the numbers out of the water, and that's unfortunate, it happens, you know, it's stuff you can't control, but it's happened two years in a row, I guess, but this year is the worst, so they're actually looking at changing health insurance providers for the coverage, even though we're self-insured, we still have, like MVP is who they use, they're looking at changing providers that are offering some kind of discount, I believe they're looking at saving a little bit of money doing that, but I don't know, if it's gonna make up that difference, I don't know, for next year, but it doesn't look good, I'm gonna argue again, but it doesn't look like, you know, it doesn't look like I'm gonna make any headway, so, let's put it this way, at least if it's... Let's put it this way, at least if it's maximum two percent, you know what's coming. But I'll try. Other than that, that's basically what this month's been, all budget meetings. I just wanna thank again the Bank of Green County for the donation, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We certainly appreciate that and anybody and everybody that's donated and all the time that everybody's donating to help us out with Spark, so I know there's a lot of time and effort going into this. And we certainly appreciate all of it.
Right, has there been any discussion of the fee for the recycling?
Uh, recycling has been brought up, it has basically leveled out for the county cost to get rid of it. But there hasn't been any follow-up discussion on what we're gonna do about it because it is still very high compared to what it was a year ago. So there's no real updated news on that.
Right, I know there was some, it was uncertain how much was gonna be brought in through the fee and whether that would cover what the county.
The director of Solid Waste is happy with what she's collected on that to offset the cost of the raises, the increasing cost. But it really hasn't been any other discussion of if we have to increase anymore. It doesn't sound like it, it didn't sound like it, it sounded like that was gonna be fine, or if it was gonna go down, we don't know yet, it's just too early to know for next year. No, we're gonna be shopping around for oil prices, we'll mention that, sure. We're gonna, when we're talking about our budget time, we're gonna be looking at oil prices for going forward for next, this heating season and next year. We're gonna get some prices from some different companies about possibly locking in at a low rate or, you know, matching the county bid and keeping it at the lowest county bid price. But that's something we'll get the numbers together and look at when the budget. On the seventeenth, correct. Yep. Other than that, I guess that's about it. Anybody has any questions, please come see me, I'd be glad to answer them or find out the answer if I don't have the answer for you. Forward, let's move on to pay abstracts, most of the abstracts. Couple, it was a couple.
Oh, which ones?
Where that yellow pieces in the back? Where the yellow sticky is? And then I think there are a few after that.
Those are phone bills. Somebody slipped stuff by. Somebody slipped stuff by it.
Make a motion that we pay the trust and agency number nine, voucher number twenty-four, in the amount of thirty-three dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Move to pay general abstract number nine, vouchers number two thirty-eight through two fifty-seven, in the amount of five thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
I move to pay general prepaid abstract number nine, vouchers two thirty-five through two thirty-seven, in total of two hundred dollars and thirteen cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
I make a motion, we pay highway abstract number nine, vouchers number seventy-eight through eighty-seven, in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars, twenty-two cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay. Move on to public time, communication board. Mary?
You did not make questions. Park committee. We met on August fourth and we were working then on conceptual design work around the Little League field. And in September, we'll be meeting on the thirtieth to finalize our Hettling Park portion of the conceptual design. On the twentieth, at two P M., we're going to do a full review of our draft document. And then, of October, sorry. On November seventeenth, from four to six, we are going to open up the draft document for some public comment, see if folks have anything more to add before we hopefully present on December second to the town board. So could we please get on the agenda for December second for about probably fifteen to twenty minutes between presentation and your questions, 'cause I know there's gonna be questions.
What was November's?
November seventeenth.
It might need more time than that.
We might.
Most probably.
Just based on the last.
Let me put it this way, the presentation is gonna be done.
Incredible, no, we say it's gonna be a longer time.
In the meantime, everybody's been watering very nicely through the summer, thank you everyone who participated, but we do not have to water any longer. So do I contact, or does somebody here on the board contact Jimmy? So why don't, why don't you let? And thank you very much for him and his crew putting that stuff out. I won't be present for the budget meetings at your, your workshops that you're scheduling, so I'm gonna tell you now. Twenty to twenty-five thousand for engineering design work so that we can get designs together to last us through the next five to ten years as we work on different projects so that everything is consistent through the years. And then, I know you and I had discussed that we need somebody to be coordinating all the work over there. So whether you do a stipend for a current employee or decide that somebody else can be coordinating the work, getting some of the stuff done. I mean, the folks who participated know how much is involved with watering those plants and getting things weeded. And that's just the entrance. Obviously, there's the mowing that goes on and as time goes on, the brush will have to get trimmed back a bit. We are, we've spoken about having volunteer days, but that will be maybe three or four days through the year to do work. Whereas if you're gonna have a park, you're gonna have to have consistent maintenance on it. So however the board decides to work that out. At the budget meetings, but I won't, I'm saying it now, so. And obviously, we're going to try to find out what didn't go through for the grant and keep an eye on other grant application opportunities.
Well, for Iroquois, there is the, another submission period that I believe is November first. And that we could do up to ten thousand dollars for that. And that could be the engineering work too. So they did say, when I had spoken to them a couple of years ago, that they will be willing to fund the project in phases.
In phases.
So I think we just, and we would need to decide at the budget workshop too. There is still about, I think, fifteen hundred dollars, I think it is, of work to finish on the entrance that, from the grant that we submitted to them. And that is the cradle trees and I think there's some other kind of planting, I can't recall.
Yeah.
That, it's about fifteen hundred dollars to complete that. And we have one year from roughly June first to complete that, that project.
So we can be planting next spring.
Right, or possibly in the fall to do it too. There's only a couple of times a year that you really wanna plant trees.
Did I get everything, ladies?
Wouldn't it?
No, I think we can do it in the fall, if we did it soon.
Yeah, you'd have to do it.
Oh, this fall?
This fall.
Okay, I thought you were, okay.
Next fall.
Has the board received any comments in how beautiful it looks?
I've had one person say, don't tell me that they liked it, it looked very nice, yes. I've heard from her, but yeah, the only one person's talking about it.
It was lovely, wasn't it? It looks great, yeah.
One thing we're waiting for response on is the dump piles that are near the creek in the back of the park. I mean, they're supposed to be.
I believe the one pile is gonna move with the blacktop.
With the blacktop?
Yes. That's gonna be moved, we're working on it.
Okay. Great. That's what I've got?
Thank you, Mary.
Hi. I just wanted to ask if there's any update about, from our lawyers regarding people selling their homes to other organizations, that, how is handicapping people?
Uh, no, not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay, well, I'll make a very lovely announcement. This is regarding one of our Claremontians, I love that word. The Land Conservancy of Columbia County is honoring three people, three women. And one of them happens to be a Claremont, a Claremontian as I call it. And that person is Lindsay Shute. She didn't know I was going to say this, but she's being honored because of her impact on landscapes and on the community, so. She'll be very proud of this person.
Congratulations.
It's a good thing I didn't tell her I was gonna say this. Make sure I leave before she leaves.
All right, I guess one more thing I wanted to add is, you know, we are having the budget meetings. I did ask all the departments to get me a budget request back by September first. And I received four out of ten back, so that tells me that a lot of departments don't want increases. So I'm happy to say that we shall be very good shape this year. So unless I receive them in the next week, there will be no consideration of that as far as increasing the budgets. That being said, is there no other comment?
Just one thing, for the budget committee meeting, I just wonder if lack maintenance, long-term, 'cause I know you're stepping down, so maybe your capacity during this type of work would change into something else. Anyway, it's just something to consider. I don't know what platform it's built on, but that's something to certainly make sure that someone can do that way.
You're right.
Are the dates for the budget meetings be on the web?
Oh, I'm sorry, what did you say?
There are dates for the budget, yes, will that be on the web?
Oh, you can post the dates?
Definitely put those dates on, yeah.
Yeah, we can put those up, sure.
Usually do. And I've got one more. I say it every year this time, put some money inside so you can do a comprehensive plan in twenty-twenty-two without having to show out a whole bunch at once.
We will put all that into our meeting and have a session.
I tell them every year.
Sometimes, you know, you're not gonna be here, you had to be for it, so.
I'm gonna say it now.
Well, we're not.
I'll repeat it.
Okay.
All right, if there's something else, then one of them, most of you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you.